Let's start over. Good morning and welcome to the standing committees meeting for Wednesday, April 20th, two thousand and twenty-two. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Would clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Yeah.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please restate your name and your neighborhood for the record once you are called. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. First do no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham have all pledged to help Bon Air get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people. A beautiful calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and birds. Will the rest of city council promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air neighborhood? We, the property owners, say no to anything other than a green space to replace the once valuable asset of the school that was closed against our will. Reapportionment is thoroughly rejected by we, the people of Bon Air. There is no benefit to us, only harm. The answer is no. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Uh, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, uh, Bill Suver, Frankfurt, Kentucky, uh, Helsinki, um, Finland, uh, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Academy, presidency, two thousand and twenty-four. Key for me in all of this is, uh, vote by voter verification and signature to signature verification for nomination papers, not just in, uh, Pennsylvania and Allegheny County, but across the United States. Now, vote by voter verification means that the voter has the ability to check to see if his vote or her vote was for the person he thinks or she thinks he voted for. The Allegheny County, uh, Pennsylvania position is to prevent that. Do any of you on this council dispute what I just said? Apparently not. There is no one that I know of in the Allegheny County Division of Elections that disputes that. We cannot check. As a consequence, Ganey cannot prove that Ganey voted for Ganey, nor can any of you on this council prove that you voted, if you did, voted for yourselves. You can't prove anything. That means there's a gaping hole, and it's not just here in, uh, Pittsburgh or Allegheny County, it is across the United States. The second is signature to signature verification on nomination papers. The state of Pennsylvania and Allegheny County do not require verification of any signature on nomination papers. No state ID is necessary to have a signature on those papers. That means that those signatures could be by anyone from anywhere in any way whatsoever. Another gaping hole that I think should be plugged. The Pennsylvania Allegheny County Election Division does not dispute what I just said. Do you? Anyone? Mr. Lavelle, uh, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Coghill? Any of you dispute what I said? Do you think that I'm wrong, factually wrong about this? One of the concerns that has come up over and over again is the issue of inclusionary zoning and affordable housing. Uh, this morning, the Pittsburgh Business News reported, uh, if you noticed, that, uh, the, the city in the world that leads in affordable housing is Pittsburgh. Now, there are many of us who don't believe that, but that's the report. If that is true, then what is all this racket about affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh? If it's being reported across the United States and the world that that is true, then why do this at all? I insist that you investigate what that means in relationship to what you're doing with IZNAH.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Kimberly Patterson.
Good morning. Thank you for receiving me. I'm Kimberly Patterson. I live at seven twenty-five Dunmore Street in the twelfth ward of Pittsburgh, and I am a forty-six-year resident in the home that I live in. I'm a proud homeowner in a very rural area of the city of Pittsburgh. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents, excuse me, of the low side of Dunmore Street, which is deemed a private, yet the high, which is deemed private, yet the high side of the street was made public years ago. I'm advocating for the passage of legislation. I assume all of you have read the, went over the legislation proposal that was given yesterday. I'm assuming you are familiar as yourself with it. We don't get city services, and Mr. Councilman Burgess is aware of this. Um, there are seven families that reside in that area, in that block, and we're all impacted by this legislation, which we hope will be passed. We're here to beseech you to pass this legislation. Um, the proposal language was excellently written. The only statement that is incorrect is the time that we've been seeking services. It's not twenty years, it's actually thirty years that we've been fighting this battle. As I stated, there are seven families that are impacted, and most of them are elderly citizens. In spite of paying our taxes for the city services, the residents don't receive snow plowing or paving services. Half the residents are elderly and on fixed incomes. We've experienced more severe winters, as such, as such, the terrain is very dangerous. The last snowstorm, the AAA trucks could not assist several residents which were snowed in vehicles. This is very dangerous for the citizens and the EMS workers. As I mature in years, I realize the severity of the situation. With residents struggling to maintain homes in these high inflation times, we cannot secure and pay private contractors for snow removal or street paving, yet our tax dollars contribute to the city services. We would like for you to consider yourselves, your parents, your loved ones. If you have paid your taxes for almost fifty years, you have worked all your lives, yet been relegated to an unusual quagmire situation that can be rectified by passing this legislation. Keep in mind that this legislation could save lives and contribute to the aesthetics of the city we call home. Therefore, we are beseeching you to pass this legislation to make us a public street. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Andre DeValley.
Hi, uh, good morning, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Uh, good morning, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the following legislation, two thousand and twenty-two dash, uh, zero two seventy, creating a license for short-term rentals as well as a registry of those renting, as well as the guests of these, uh, short-term rentals. My name is Andre Del Valley. I am the Senior Director of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association, where a statewide organization representing apartment owners, managing companies, and their industry suppliers representing thirty-seven thousand four hundred and seven units and twenty-one management companies here in Pittsburgh. While we appreciate council's commitment to keeping its residents safe, we have a number of questions about the legislation as written and would welcome the opportunity to be part of future stakeholder meetings, um, as some of our members would fall under the parameters of this legislation. Unfortunately, given how quickly this legislation was introduced and had hearings scheduled, we were unable to speak with any members directly about this legislation and have not been made part of any conversations regarding the legislation. We would respectfully ask you to hold the legislation today to allow stakeholder engagement that allows productive conversations in order to prevent future incidents like those that occurred this weekend in Pittsburgh. The safety of our residents is the utmost priority, and we welcome the opportunity to work with this legislative body to find common sense solutions that keeps residents safe within our units. I've emailed my information to Councilmember Wilson, as well as the chief clerk, or as the clerk, and once again, would like to thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning and your consideration on holding this legislation for future stakeholder engagement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Bill Shattler.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Bill Schlatter, a longtime resident of Mount Washington. I'd like to suggest changes to the proposed short-term rental ordinance to help strengthen it. Currently, the ordinance allows for LLCs to be the owner of a building and utilize it as purely a short-term rental property. Many cities, however, including Philadelphia and Denver, require short-term Airbnb rental to be a unit of a primary resident. These cities have found that this requirement creates more accountability, as often many of these LLCs are filled with investors that aren't from the community. Like in Pittsburgh, they are there for the quick investment booking bucks and never even reside in the neighborhood. And this community certainly doesn't need more absentee landlords taking advantage of our community. Additionally, your proposed ordinance permits multi-unit buildings to be utilized as Airbnbs, but does not permit hotels to be Airbnbs. I think this ordinance needs clarity here. As a multi-unit filled with five, ten, fifteen, or even more units, all dedicated to Airbnbs, sure sounds like a property masquerading as a hotel. What, may I ask, is really the difference between a hotel and a multi-unit filled with short-term Airbnb rentals? And as your proposed ordinance notes, hotels are not permitted to be Airbnbs. Many of the areas where Airbnbs reside, such as where I live on Mount Washington, are also not zoned for hotels, but rather residential zones. There was a reason for that, to keep it a residential community of individuals who also pay taxes to the city. Additionally, what safety oversight is there in a multi-unit building with five, ten, fifteen, or more transient units? At least hotels have a front desk. Lastly, the transformational trend of converting multi-unit buildings in residential areas to transient, short-term rental places, more instability and pressure onto the housing rental market. Like in other cities, this in turn will drive up the rental prices and create additional affordable housing problems that I don't think any member of this council seeks. It also weakens the adhesiveness of our community fabric. Our communities need more stability, getting to know one another and looking out for each other, sitting in living rooms and on the stoops at our neighbors and talking about how we can improve our schools, our neighborhoods, and help our families and friends. I'm not sure those are the types of conversations or actions happening in the transient corporate-owned Airbnbs, whose owner's focus is not on strengthening our community, but rather is more focused on strengthening the wallet of the outside investors.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward at this time.
Good morning. My name is Siobhan F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I was going over my papers, and I ran across papers from January of two thousand and three, where I had a petition. I petitioned for open hearing because of council. All the white men went to Harrisburg, but did not tell Ms. Carlisle, the black woman, or Salaudine, which that's questionable. I'm told that they told Sala, he just didn't come. When I heard Ms. Carlisle say, "I do not appreciate standing at the water fountain, and one of you councilmen come to tell me that you went to Harrisburg, and I know nothing about it." I also want to tell you, on that petition, when I, I, I was messing with, I laid it down in the wrong place, but anyway, on that petition, the very last signature was my son, Anthony C. Johnson. He had signed that petition, so he's dead, but he's still fighting. That you councilpeople are showing racism and colorism. Dark complected people, Mr. Burgess and Mr. Lavelle, we're not permitted to speak as you lycan complected people are. Now, I want to use example, you know, white people, you might not understand what I'm saying about the color. I sat here last week, it was Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Burgess, and Mr. William Wilson. And there was a woman in there, and she asked me, she said, "Is there no black councilmen?" I said, "Yeah, they're like, they're, they're black, but they lack pigmentation." Yes, you do, and you don't care for us dark complected people, because you've shown that. Even Esther Bushwin came here, you wouldn't let hers continue, but you'll let Tim Stevens. Now, I want to bring something else up. When you were talking about defund the police, I said, "No, we're going to say reform." I'm not talking about defund. See, I listened to Tim Stevens when he said, "Yes, and if you," I, I, I'm mixed, I got the mixed children. So what's he saying? If you see lycan complected, and they're Stevens, don't, don't kill them. My son is very dark, that's why he died. He was begging for his life, begging for his life. He said, "I got one lung, he was bleeding from his head," and they left him and said, "If the troublemaker starts any more trouble." My son walked in the door and was knocked out, but yet still, they left him. My daughter says, "Anytime if it's a, it's a drunk on the street and there's blood from his head," which the policeman wrote, "that my son was drinking water, he looked okay, but the issue of blood." They said he was bleeding. He said he had one lung, he was crying, and they left him. The man came back and kicked my son to death. I felt the pain. I was at my daughter's, at my friend's house, I felt the pain, I didn't know what that was. Went in the kitchen and sat there, and I said, "Oh, God, oh, Lord, am I dying?" Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with us today?
Good morning, council. So, uh, Tim Stevens, Chairman and CEO of Black Political Empowerment Project, BEP, twenty-two oh one, Wally Avenue. Uh, clarification from my sister who just spoke. The Black Political Empowerment Project and the guy before you, who's been advocate for over fifty years, I advocate, when I advocate for black people, I'm not advocating for light-skinned black people, I'm advocating for black people, please. I am very clear, however, because I am a light-skinned African American, that, uh, that the issue of color in our society has never been resolved, even among black people. And that's something that is honest, it is true, but we must be clear that we advocate for the support of African Americans and for people of color. With regard to the legislation as before you, um, I appreciate you dealing with this. We have a meeting at two o'clock today that Councilwoman Liv Bennett has initiated. Councilwoman from, for the county, thirteenth district, uh, representatives of the Black Political Empowerment Project, Coalition Against Violence, and the North Side Partnership had a literal two-and-a-half-hour conversation two days ago. About five or six of us specifically outlining some thoughts, uh, on violence beyond our coalition document, which we will be presenting today at two o'clock, some of which will be presented again Friday at six at the North Side Partnership. In terms of what you've presented, uh, I wanted to thank you all for moving quickly. My request is, before there is a final vote, I would like to see the Home Rights Brown Law Association and the ACLU, uh, review this, because this is done very quickly. We appreciate your speed, uh, particularly when dealing with what we saw happen on Easter Sunday, uh, to make sure that the writing is done in a way that, uh, all rights are protected. But I wanted to encourage you, uh, the fact that you have moved forward to do something that I wanted to congratulate you on that, because this is, this violence thing is just, it's out of hand. And we all have to do various actions and activities, right, to impact it from every perspective possible. So I want to encourage the concept of some kind of control of how these things are rented out, uh, because this is absolutely unacceptable. So that's where we are with that, and, and, and also, because it's come about so quickly, to give more community groups from different neighborhoods an input opportunity, right, to review this, because I literally just got it. I, I tried to get it from council yesterday, and I only got an overview, I didn't get the actual document. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers with us in chambers and or online? Seeing none, um, that will move us to our standing committee's agenda, the first committee of the day, being Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Madam Clerk, can you read two sixteen to seventeen and eighteen together? All three have had executive sessions. I was, um, not yet, I'm sorry.
Bill two sixteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney P.C. for legal services for an employment-related matter in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Bill number two seventeen, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Autumn Cassian in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars related to the full and final settlement of a case file in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please. Bill number two eighteen, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Tina Marie Coria Denali in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars relating to the full and final settlement of a case file in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three?
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair, abstain on two sixteen.
One abstention on bill two sixteen. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, that takes us to bill two nineteen.
Bill two nineteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Strasburger, McKenna, Gustaf, and Gefsky to address pending tax litigation at an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That takes us to our new papers, bill two fifty-one.
Bill two fifty-one, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in an amount of the eleven thousand one hundred twenty dollars and ten cent in settlement of a claim for damage to an impact alternator and on SR fifty-one near Wooddrift Street from a city police vehicle.
Second. Session, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill two fifty-two.
Bill two fifty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the Commonwealth Press for services relating to the design, production, and marketing and sale of officially licensed and branded City of Pittsburgh merchandise.
Fifth discussion, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you very much. Uh, who would be?
Leave. Mr. Cornell, I think.
I guess the main question I have is, is there cost involved? It's not specified here.
Sure. So Patrick Cornell, Assistant Director for the, uh, Operating Side of Things and the Office of Management and Budget. Um, the way this contract will be structured is a revenue profit sharing. Um, so Commonwealth Press will be able to take on the costs of marketing, design, um, production, and then, you know, from their proceeds, they will remit a percentage back to the city of Pittsburgh.
And who has the final approval of the design, marketing?
So some of the designs, um, will work through the administration side, you know, the relevant department directors, um, are marketing and design professionals and IMP in the sign shop, um, and, you know, and the grand scheme of things, um, the mayor and, and the mayor's office.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Quick question. What's the, um, difference between what we can buy at, you know, any retail shop with Pittsburgh logo on it as to what we will be selling? First of all, we're going to gain revenue from that, and we're going to share it with the printer, uh, and the marketing and advertising company. Right?
Right. So legally, um, we are not able to copyright the city flag or the city seal. There's case law, um, working through that. Um, but, you know, program names, department names, department seals and department logos, we do have the ability, um, to market designs based around those.
So for instance, um, comparable to other cities, obviously, New York, right? They probably generate a lot of revenue from marketing there. And do, do we anticipate, um, healthy revenue? Is there any forecast as to how much?
Not yet. Um, we are trying to structure, you know, where we would like to structure this agreement with a certain percentage, and if things work well, we would reconsider what that final percentage looks like, um, with Commonwealth Press. Um, I do not have the details of, of what other cities are making. You know, New York City was, was a big base and model for this RFP as we're moving through it.
Yeah, well, I guess it depends how much merchandise we sell.
Right.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Second round, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you. Um, is there, I don't, I can't think of a better terminology, healthy boundaries? Are there healthy boundaries around what kinds of merchandise can actually be produced or remarked?
Not as it stands right now, but that will be worked through as we move through negotiations.
The, the only reason I, I bring this up is there was an incident, uh, many years ago under the Ravensoll administration where there were, there were items being marketed under the city logo, which were not exactly probably items that we would wish to see marketed under the city logo.
I will make sure we, uh, address that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill is recommended. Bill two fifty-three.
Bill two fifty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of, of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the National Traffic Safety Institute for professional services relating to a driver training e-learning system for ASOM not to exceed thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars over three years and for the payment of costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. We now need a motion to approve the invoices.
Moved.
Second.
Session, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Well, that takes us to P cars, the motion to approve the P cars.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cars are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor, one new paper, bill two fifty-four.
Bill two fifty-four, resolution amending resolution four thirty entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Grant Agreements to Receive Funding from Allegheny County Health Department to Develop a Public Health-Informed Diversion Program and Further Providing for Expenditures Under the Terms of Said Agreement to Increase the Amount Authorized by the Grant Agreement and the Amount Authorized for Expenditures."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, um, what does this bill effectively do?
Uh, is the director on?
Skowsky.
No, I do not see.
This related to lead? Is there any public safety?
There should be somebody on the call. Uh, why don't we just, can we just leave it open, and I'll try to get somebody on the call?
I know. Yep.
Sure. Yep.
Okay. All right. I'll, let me try to get them on the line. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. That'll take us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, one defer paper, bill fifty-six.
Bill fifty-six, resolution vacating a portion of Forbes Avenue laid out in the Associate Congregation Plan, recorded in the Plan Book, Volume One, page ninety-five, in the first ward, sixth council district.
Motion to hold for thirty days.
Uh, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held thirty days. That takes us to bill one oh four.
Bill one oh four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director or acting director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms. and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway, Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference and Rail Pollution Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval to reconstruct the crossing of the North Avenue Brighton Road Bridge docketed at Public Utility Commission and from Northside Leadership Conference at all versus the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Appeal docketed at number sixty one, C D twenty nineteen in the Commonwealth Court.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Clark Hill.
I defer to Councilman Wilson.
Councilperson Strasburg.
I have to leave. I have, I just wanted to cast my aye vote for all future bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in the light of having to postpone a public meeting. Motion to hold the bill for a week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held one week. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one supplemental paper, bill two seventy.
Bill two seventy ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title Seven Business License and Article Seven Business Licenses by creating a new chapter seven sixty eight accessory short term rentals.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Yeah. Before I get started, I just want to make a the, what do we call it, scribblers there? I want to just make a motion to just change in the severability clause. Point oh, it's a typo, point oh. The five should be of six. So point oh. Yep. Understand. So.
The way the bill's numbered.
Right.
I don't even need to make a motion for that, right? Okay, so I'll withdraw that motion.
Oh, just a public.
Just.
Voice.
Yeah, just a voice. Okay. All right. Yeah, I want to make some some comments and then my intention is to hold the bill and.
Thank you.
Okay. Please. So I just wanted to make the make the comments about the bill. The bill is is in the works, looking forward to work with members. You know, I appreciate the comments made and all the emails that Ben received. Looking forward to a robust conversation around this. And I do have I do have some recommendations, but I'll I'll defer to the council president.
Thank you. Madam President.
I just want to say that we're going to hold this because the administration has some things that they'd like to add. Public Safety thanked us for bringing it forward that, but they have some things that they want to add. Tim Stevens, I understand, made some comments today that he would like some more additional people involved. And I'm looking forward to working with Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Wilson and all the members that co-sponsored Justin. I think there was just about almost every member. But could we maybe play back that so that we can add the sponsors, the co-sponsors that wanted to be added? I can't remember all the names offhand.
I got them.
I do know there were quite a few. And so I just want to respect that, that they they need to add it to the bill. And that's it. Just that we're, I want to work with everyone on it, but I I know that this was important to Councilman Wilson in particular because of what happened with his area this week. But this is something Councilwoman Gross started back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. She worked with, then, it's my understanding, Councilman Gilman, who was, he was Councilman at the time. And I believe, or he was maybe at the mayor's office by, I can't remember. But that they had started working on it back then. I started working on it with our solicitor, city council solicitor Dan Friedson. So I want to thank you for writing this and finally getting it moving. But it was for my part, it's because I have people on Grandview Avenue being evicted from their home, five families being evicted because someone from out of town bought their property and is turning it into an Airbnb with no regulations, no permit for that kind of activity, no kind of zoning for that on Grandview Avenue. And I also have people all throughout Great, in Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights calling me and talking to me about the issues that they're struggling with throughout that area. And it's a lot. So for my part, that's what I was addressing. I was working with my some of my constituents in my area. And then it escalated and I'll let Councilman Wilson speak to himself for himself with the issues that he experienced over the weekend. And he also was working on legislation. So that's why we all came together, but we all have very different reasons. Councilwoman Gross is inundated with these types of properties in her district. Councilman Cross, we're hearing a lot from your residents. I didn't realize there were so many in the city. Yeah. So I just want to thank everyone for working together. I'm looking forward to working with everyone, getting up with the best possible solution for Pittsburgh, for all of Pittsburgh. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cross.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, would you come out, please? Just one thing I'd like to speak to, making certain we address in the bill before we move to hold the bill is something that's very similar to our rental registry. And that is having a local responsible agent, I think, is the terminology we use in rental registry so that we can easily contact someone. Hi, Bob, would you come to the table, please? So that we have a source to contact when there are problems that are arising. And something like this that might have been in place Sunday evening or Saturday evening might have been a preventative tool. So Bob, would you introduce yourself, please, for this?
Bob Sharlin, Chief of Staff for Councilman Bruce Cross.
Thanks, Bob, for being here.
Friend to all city council.
Uh, thank you. And so Bob and I have had lengthy discussions about the inability to reach Airbnb when there are problems with properties, whether that, you know, be noise or late night activity or whether that be overcrowding or waste management, or whatever the case may be. There are outlets, and Bob will speak to these, of other things in the city like scooters and other entities where they do provide provision for very easy accessibility to work through problems. And but what we find with Airbnb is that is not the case. And so I wanted Bob to speak to that a little bit so that we could take into consideration for this bill the importance of having a local agent to be able to contact directly. So Bob, please.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. So we get calls very regularly about Airbnb. Sometimes it's for parties, but more often than not, it's for routine managing of trash, of parking issues, things like that. And sorry. The issue that we have is that we, Airbnb provides no extra service, no extra liaisons that that other companies have that we work with all the time here at council. So it really does fall on the property owner who often is not a local agent, who's often hidden behind an LLC. There's no local agent, someone in Allegheny County or even, you know, in the City of Pittsburgh, able to help us with our problems here. I compare them a lot to like Healthy Ride or Spin. If you ever deal with with one of those organizations, they're Johnny on the spot. They solve your problem the next day and are at least willing to talk to you. When you deal with Airbnb, the onus is on you to prove that this property is an Airbnb. You can hear from the neighbors that have talked to residents and have said, oh, we're here for an Airbnb for the weekend for the Steeler game or whatnot. But Airbnb makes you create an account and then have to go try to to rent out the same property to prove that this actually was an Airbnb.
Say that again, because this is the madness of the of the labor that we have to go through just to, the first step being to even prove that the property is Airbnb.
So the onus is really on us to prove that this actually is an Airbnb despite the fact that, you know, the neighbors are complaining about their inability to manage their trash or parties that are happening at the property. Airbnb says, I don't think that's us. It's the same problem that we deal with when we deal with any sort of LLC that's, you know, renting out an out of town property that, and really the impetus for why we need the rental registry. The same problem happens here and there's nothing that makes an Airbnb owner a better property owner than than just being, you know, anyone else. It really, there's Airbnb provides no support for that. And, you know.
Can you talk a little bit about their neighborhood support program or what it is supposed to be? And how it's supposed to help and how it fails?
So their neighborhood support program was, I think, I believe their their response to multiple, multiple complaints of, or multiple cities that have complained about the same thing here. And, you know, it doesn't give us any help here. It really is. We have to call, we have to wait on hold. I've been on hold for ninety minutes trying to get in touch with someone from Airbnb. They, you know, and then we just have to talk about how we create an account and how, you know, there's, there's no sort of liaison that can work with with council that can work with the city, you can work with the county or state. There's, it really is just on on us to work. There was no neighborhood support team, I think, maybe two years ago. It's a relatively new program, but it's it's miles away from, you know, what Spin or Healthy Ride does.
It turns out to be bureaucracy at its finest. So like if you go into the neighborhood support system, the first thing they ask you is in an emergency, you want to call nine one one? Is it a house party or is there disturbances nearby? And then you request a platform by which you can register that. If it's non urgent, send us a message. We will complete the form. We will send you an email. You'll need to confirm with a case number. A team will review your concerns, da, 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 you can imagine. And if it's a short term rental where someone's there a night or two, they're long gone before we have any opportunity to resolve an incident that's happening right there at that moment in time.
One of the things that happens a lot in our offices is we'll get a phone call on Monday morning about a party that happened on Friday. And we say that, hey, there was a party that happened over the weekend. They give us no, there's no benefit of the doubt there. We have to show that there was a police report filed. It's exactly the same process we we have to go through for rental property. Like I said, Airbnb doesn't give any sort of preference to us calling from the from the city by any means.
So the the spirit of Airbnb was really to be locally locally owned housing property where a sole property owner, single unit living in the actual unit would be able to actually rent the property out. What we find, and I'm sure everybody else finds again and again and again, is commercial investment. I believe the property in question on Sunday night, a Councilman Wilson's district was an LLC that was an investment property. And so, and what the council president is saying about what's happening, especially when you look at an area like Grandview Avenue, of course, that's prime real estate because of the view. And so you have people, investors coming in that are investing in these properties solely for the purpose of running them short term and at exorbitant prices with really no regulation on them or any, again, I'll emphasize local agent, where when there are concerns that we have someone that we can go to to address the 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 situation at hand quickly and effectively. It's always post whatever happened. And then again, like Bob said, we have to actually prove the onus is on us to actually prove that it is a Airbnb property. So, well. Well, parts of the the legislation, you know, support the spirit of that. I think we can go a little bit deeper in that and be a little more effective. And as Tim Stevens was saying this morning, and there was another gentleman that spoke this morning too, the concern around LLC coming in and making this investment. It really does kill the spirit of what Airbnb Airbnb was intended to be. And it is taking it to a completely different level. So another concern that I have, and I'm not certain that that we are able to address that through this bill, but it's the it's the people that want to go rogue and and not follow systems or not get licensed or not, you know, follow regulation. So we had a very similar incident on Carson Street. You might want, you want to talk, can you talk about that without giving away names or addresses? But can we talk about one actor in particular rented a property, pretended to be running a yoga studio? That was not the intent of the studio and how that's progressed over the last year or so now?
Yeah, there's a, there's an owner of a, owner of a business. She doesn't actually own the property. But she sub leases her, the property out through her. She is the lease and then leases it out to to parties. Originally, it was supposed to be a yoga studio. We were super excited about that. This is actually also in Councilman O'Connor's district. They're dealing with a similar issue there too. But she was, instead of doing yoga in the mornings, and it was supposed to be yoga in the mornings and like, you know, little parties in the afternoon, but it turned into ragers, five dollars a head or twenty dollars a head to come in and, you know, and have, you know, beer or whatever might be there. And it was a nightmare to evict these people. Luckily, on their lease, there was some sort of sound clause that they kept violating and the roommates upstairs were unhappy with it. But we had to go through multiple iterations of of court cases. It actually ended up being that it was better for us, or better for the owner to actually, the owner of the actual property, not the owner of the business, to find a way to break the lease instead of going through an eviction because an appeal of an eviction would take another three months following. So we do run into these problems with with these not, not great business owners that are running these businesses all throughout the city and running these huge parties. The same woman is now running another business, very similar, I guess, eight blocks up on Carson Street right now. So.
While that property owner was able to break the lease after, this is probably about a year into this, was able to break the lease. She did leave that location, came to another location, which is owned by an LLC and I believe it's in McCandless or Wilkins Township. And then held the event Friday night that preceded the event that took place in Councilman Wilson's district. Where Saturday morning I got calls of about two hundred, two hundred and fifty underage kids in the property that spilled out onto Carson Street. They had to close the street momentarily to clear the crowd. The crowd, of course, disperses but goes through all the residential areas. My phone rings off the hook Saturday morning. Can you believe what happened? What was this? Why did this happen? Had neighbors report that they found guns that were stashed in the bushes, you know, da, 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 and on and on. So the reason I bring that up is what we do here is not necessarily going to regulate the people that want to go rogue, which is my frustration. And I don't know how we, as a council, may be able to address that or not be able to address that. I thought it was important to make members aware that even with regulations on Airbnb, we are still most likely going to deal with these kinds of situations. Last summer, I spoke a little bit about this yesterday, where it felt like the world had gone off the rails. And, you know, alls I I did last summer was field calls from from people that were opening these B Y O B clubs, these bottle clubs, and there's another term for them, speakeasies. And they were popping up everywhere and we were at our wits end in trying, you experienced it as well too in Carrick. And we were at our wits end in any kind of regulation to try to shut these down. One club actually burned to the ground, which was the only way we were able to actually close the club. It caught fire and thank God no one was in there, but it burned. We worked collectively with the District Attorney's Office as well. I had some comment from the District Attorney's Office yesterday that I'll share with you, Council President, that thought might be helpful in strengthening the bill as well. But the, yeah, please do, Bob.
One more point back to Airbnb is that there are good Airbnb owners out there. We know many of them. But Airbnb also doesn't give support to the owners of of properties. There's a property that's actually right across from my house that was, he was a gentleman who purchased the property, was continually renting it out as an Airbnb, was always having problems with the renters that he was renting to. You know, other neighbors were calling and complaining. And eventually he ended up selling the property because it was just too much for him to manage. And what he, you know, there was no way for him to vet to make sure that there wasn't going to be a party thrown there that night. And it just ended up being, you know, too much for him. So there are good owners there, but Airbnb doesn't do enough to support them either.
And I just wanted to emphasize that as well and and in that there are good owners. And, you know, and I've heard from a number of them. I imagine members are getting emails. I'm, I got some from the, hey, like, look, I run a, I run a good Airbnb here, you know? I want to help, you know, please don't punish me. And especially at a time when, you know, the social economy, as I'll call it, has taken such a hit through pandemic and and people are trying to reinvent their businesses. And, you know, I remember when I was in Sacramento two weeks ago and they had the mass shooting, the the mayor came out and he implored. the mayor came out and he implored, please don't let this stop you from coming to our downtown areas, you know, where we need to repopulate our downtown areas. They are good. They are safe. They are clean. You can come to them. And I just want to make certain that that we do recognize that there are responsible owners. Um, and this, this event was tragic on every, on every level. Uh, this was tragic. Um, and, uh, but I don't want to paint everybody with that brush. But at the same time, I'm very supportive of the efforts to to put sensible regulation on short term rental. It's the right thing to do. We need to do that, but I just want us to be mindful and and how we approach it. And I, I just want to offer my help any way I can. Anything else, Bob, we should offer?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody for hearing us out. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Cockhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Charlin. He's a, he's a good man. Where'd you get him from?
I, you know, he, I found him wandering the streets one day. Bob actually worked at Councilman Cockhill's office.
Yeah, we all know.
We stole him.
Never forget where you come from, Bobby. No, no, regarding the bill that I did have, um, two, two questions, actually. First and first one was regarding PLI, you know, with already an overstretched department. Does this put a burden on them to make sure all these Airbnbs are registered? Is it? Has has anybody talked to PLI about this? Okay, and?
So they're going to, whatever the fees are that they come up, it will be the cost of what it would be for PL and I. That's what I heard. Bobby, have you heard anything different?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we did similar to rental registry and and for lead enforcement is to calculate that into the cost of what it would take to inspect.
Got it. Okay. Um, the other thing was, um, I find it very constructive, you know, and helpful to have telephone numbers and names of people who are staying there for incidents like happened the other night. And I know Councilman Kraus, the frustrations we have when we, you know, have a property owner that we can't find, you know, wherever they are in the world. The only thing I didn't feel like it quite fit, and maybe somebody can explain to me, is that the fifteen day limit. Simply because I know a lot of people come in for two months, three months, and, um, where does that fit in? Is that necessary part of this bill?
So I don't, Councilman Wilson and I will have to talk about it and Councilwoman Gross, because she's a, well, everyone will all talk about it. I think that's part of the process is where we're going to make amendments, and that has been brought up by other people. That maybe that should be one of the areas that we look to amend, because there are people that come in for longer stays. So I don't want to say that we're definitely going to amend it, but we're definitely looking into it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, sure.
I'll make some, I'll speak to that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, no, that was the only things that I found, you know, maybe just didn't quite fit. And if we can address those, amend it, whatever, to make it better, that's, that's great. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Second round, Madam President.
Yeah, I I just want to again, say that we do know that there are good owners and that there are some people that operate well. And so that's one of the things Councilwoman Gross and I are talking about, and I'm already working with the solicitor on some incentives. With those local people that are doing some good things and how we can help them. But I also know there's people who claim that they're good and not are are not always. And I've actually had some of them reach out to me and say that they would love to help me. And I'm thinking, you're exactly why I'm writing this bill, because, you know, we do have concerns with some of the properties you own. So although there's some that I think are offering, you know, valid solid suggestions, but I think it's up to us and our solicitor, our city council solicitor and our law department to work through the, um, you know, what is going to work and what is not going to work. But I do want to say that we are interested in doing some, some more things. I know Councilman Wilson's eager to talk about it because this is so timely for himself. I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to take a step back and talk about just, you know, you were, you were starting to talk about with having the actual name and and people who, uh, like a contact information, like a way to get that contact information, especially for public safety. So you know, I was immediately was starting to talk with, uh, public safety about this bill. And, um, you know, I mixed it in with the briefing over the events that have happened. And just really trying to understand from their, their take, and they immediately, uh, talked about options that other cities use and a way that they can get information fast on the property. One was, um, a way to label the property visually whenever, you know, if if, uh, law enforcement would arrive, so um, like a sticker in the window, but obviously not all properties look the same. So I'd like to work with, um, you know, um, just, you know, the idea of that, um, with members, but then also how that would actually be implemented through PLI. I mean, it would have to be information that PLI would be able to gather. Not sure if it's like something like a QR code or actual information on the window and a number for the individual that would be responsible to, you know, to pick up the phone if there's an issue. And I think responsible owners, you know, from my understanding, they, you know, they're already controlling their property in that, in that manner, where they are putting cameras and uh, sound meters and and they're calling the residents if they see more people enter the property than than, uh, than than they, you know, told them in the agreement that they, that there should be. Um, or if the sound raises up to a certain level, they're calling the the person who signed the agreement. But I also did confirm, you know, my understanding is, is that, you know, and something I got confirmation when talking to public safety is that, you know, in an instance that the, the, in an instance that the police do feel that that they wouldn't want to enter the property. Or if the, or if the owner wants them to enter the property, uh, via phone, in a phone conversation, they identify themselves as a property owner, then they, they're, they would be allowed to enter the property. So, I mean, there is possibly an opportunity here to, um, you know, to increase assurance that if the property owner does feel that something is not right, that they can give authorization. So a path for that to happen, if that's, if that's something reasonable that should 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 be occurring, um, obviously, this is, you know, I think us taking the first step here in terms of looking at the regulation and looking at how this would be enforced. Would be a good step to even even say, you know, and actually start to control, um, any of this information. I mean, currently, we'd have to go online. You you have to prove whether or not a property is an Airbnb. Um, that's what you're saying. So we don't have the data. Um, I'm sure owners and and Airbnb and and other organizations or other large companies that that offer this service, I'm sure they have, um, some data, but we need to, um, start gathering that as well. And, uh, you know, I I I'm looking to, uh, was talking with Council President uh, about holding the bill, uh, for a certain length of time. And and we're, we're going to do that. Um, I also like to have a public hearing. We're talking about a public hearing within that time, within the, within the bill being held. Uh, also, I'd like to, you know, you know, to the owners and owners that want to be, you know, responsible and and be constructive. Um, but I welcome the, you know, talk in a, in a round table manner so we can try to understand how we can, you know, get the best, uh, you know, put the best bill forward and, uh, and and make sure that we're actually improving and we're not like going backwards. You know, so you want to make the motion?
No, you make the motion, but I just want to say we don't want to hold it so that it's, we're working on it all summer. We'd like to have a solution before summer. That's all.
Thank you. Second round.
Yeah, thank you very much. And permit interrogatory just briefly. Is it my understanding that Philadelphia does actually require Airbnb to be a single own resident, right? Is, and and I guess my question may be for useless.
I believe it's, I believe my, I think my understanding is, because this is what I think is my belief at the core of this, is it has to be your primary residence?
That's what I was trying to say.
Well, you, so you don't necessarily have to live there extensively, but it has to be your primary residence.
And and then my follow up question is, is is Philadelphia permitted to do that because of their, their first city class? And we are not permitted because we're second city class? I don't know that, but I think that would certainly help to solve a whole hell of a lot of problems if we were to regulate Airbnb as your primary residence, which was the spirit of what Airbnb intended it to be when it started, at least as I understand it to be. So that that would be my charge or question to you or or my willingness to help to see if that really was a way that we could regulate both.
He's not in here now, but Dan Friesen did address that, and and I'll get him to send something.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Third round, Councilman Wilson.
I was gonna say, I did promise I'd address the the fifteen day. Uh, that's something that, um, you know, when we, when we joined together for the, for the joint bill, that was something we were currently working out. So that's just, you know, that's something we're going to work out. I believe that's just a marker at this point.
Thank you. With that, up to Councilman Cross's point, um, my only comment is I do believe if you actually restrict Airbnbs to being your, someone who owns it. E legally, that's a question we'll have to see if we can actually do. I think that gets to the core of it.
We asked for an opinion on that question specifically? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Question being, can we restrict an Airbnb to be someone's prim, someone's primary residence, owner of the? Thank you. If that.
Just, just a quick question. To restrict that to primary residents, doesn't that, I would guess, and I I don't know, but I would guess the majority of them are not their primary residents and they probably don't live there, right?
Initially, they were. Understanding is.
It was the spirit of Airbnb.
Yeah. Initially, Airbnbs were, I had a second floor of a home. I lived in a duplex, so I rented out the second floor. Or I had a room on the first floor that was an extra bedroom, so I would rent out the extra bedroom. Or even some people may have like the, a little extra house in the backyard, like things of that nature. Just sort of where it became additional income for that person renting out additional space.
I I didn't realize that was like their original spirit.
I was going away on my vacation for two weeks. I rent out my home for two weeks.
Right.
That's sort of a.
Yeah. I have many Airbnbs and I could tell you, none of them, I feel like are their primary residents at this point in my neighborhoods. So. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to hold?
Motion to, motion to hold three weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any close, it will be held three weeks.
Good discussion.
We have been joined by Laura Dragowski. So if members are okay, we'll go back to Bill two fifty four.
Laura, are you there? Sorry, it's Cory.
Hi, Councilman. Yeah, I'm here. Thank you so much.
Yes. Councilmember Wilson, I just wanted a little bit of detail on the agreement with the grant that we have in front of us.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Councilmember Wilson, I don't know if you want to ask any specific questions or you want me to give some context?
Yeah, if you could give some context, then can you just state your name and office for the record?
Sure, thank you. I'm Laura Dragowski. I'm the manager of the Office of Community Health and Safety. And our office is charged with, uh, developing upstream public health interventions, uh, co and alternative response and stabilization supports, um, along with public safety and other departments in the city. So this is, uh, this, this legislation is in reference to, um, funding that the city has received for the past two years. Uh, thanks to a a very large grant that the Allegheny County Health Department received called OD two A or Overdose Data to Action. That grant is focused on addressing the causes of overdose and trying to prevent overdose and other harms associated with substance use. Uh, we are one of a number of recipients of this funding. And with this funding, we are partnering with, uh, organizations in the, in the city, uh, to work pardon me, directly with individuals who use drugs or who are affected by substance use. In the first two years of funding, um, we have worked with the Foundation of Hope to create a, uh, community based, uh, diversion and support program. This legislation is, um, looking, and we, pardon me, we've also funded positions in our office, uh, which is an overdose prevention coordinator, a diversion project manager and a diversion community engagement coordinator. We're working on the implementation of a program called LEAD, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, as well as community based diversion in the North Side. The legislation that we presented today would authorize the Department of Public Safety and the mayor to enter into a contract with the Allegheny County Health Department, such that we could then subcontract with partners in the community to develop and sustain this programming. So, uh, Councilmember Wilson, I don't know if if there's additional questions I can answer. Yeah.
Yeah, how much is the the grant for?
Uh, I have it in front of me, pardon me, it's it's six hundred forty, six hundred forty one thousand nine hundred twenty seven dollars and ninety six cents.
Okay, yeah, I remember, um, we did the, it was on, uh, the North Side at Nova Place. We, this is that meeting where we met and walked through the neighborhood and and discussed how this, uh, uh, lead program will be implemented in the city of Pittsburgh, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. All right, great. Um, and then you mentioned Foundation of Hope, are they, that they will be working on uh, this overdose prevention?
So that's a great question. Um, it's, uh, the the grant is in, uh, inclusive of overdose prevention, but not limited to overdose prevention. Uh, so it's looking at the social determinants of health uh, and the ways that people through their intersections with the criminal legal system and our law enforcement may have an increased risk of, pardon me, poor outcomes associated with substance use. So, um, this legislation allows us to enter into our contract with the Health Department. There will be separate legislation that will be, will come before you all to allow us to enter into contracts with our community providers, uh, that includes Foundation of Hope. And that would be to, you know, their work is principally taking community based referrals, uh, for individuals who have had complex, uh, issues, challenges, and have had, um, a lack of resources. And their team has been doing, uh, intensive case management and support of those individuals, uh, to help them to, uh, meet their goals. Finding, yeah, yeah, okay.
So the, um, so recently, there was a, there, there has been, you know, here in Philadelphia, other parts of the the nation, this increase of gun violence. Obviously, the tragic events, um, that have been occurring in the past couple of weeks here. Though we've been discussing, there's other tragedies been happening, especially, um, when we talk about this bill. Approximately how many overdoses in the city of Pittsburgh are happening, um, monthly? Do you know, just off the top of your head, is that greater than ten?
Yeah, it is. I can, I can, there's a resource that I I know that you have access to. It's on the Community Health and Safety's website. It's the Overdose Dashboard. Last year, there were, uh, just under one thou, two, eleven thousand, excuse me, eleven hundred, pardon me, there were just under eleven hundred.
In the city of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, opioid related overdose.
So in the city of Pittsburgh, eleven hundred lives were lost to overdose.
Uh, those were not, not necessarily fatal. Those were overdoses that were EMS, our partners in the Bureau of EMS were able to respond to, uh, opioid related only. So that eleven hundred does not include uh, overdoses related to other substances that are not, um, opioids. And if there was a death investigation where there was no definitive cause, those, those individuals are not included in our, our, our statistics. So that eleven hundred is just what EMS responded to, the just the people that EMS responded to last year. Uh, I would venture to say that the number is much, much higher. There are many people who manage those overdoses in their homes or, uh, with part, other people. But that would be the city's response. And of course, there are also overdoses happening across the county. I do not believe that the number of fatalities related to opioid overdoses has been released by the county medical examiner for the past year, uh, but that does, you know, that does typically, uh, approach, I think, um, three hundred in the city. And I can get that information to you as well.
Oh, well, thanks. I just want to take that moment to discuss that and appreciate all the work um, that the city is doing, that you're doing, you know, like to see programs like how we, uh, integrated uh, response with EMS to provide buprenorphine to, uh, people. So appreciate all the work and it's very tragic to to hear that number.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And I will, I do want to acknowledge that the the buprenorphine program and the overdose under, about getting a better understanding of what's happening in our community. um, under, about getting a better understanding of what's happening in our community. I, you know, we are thankful to council for the support on that front, uh, to the mayor's office, uh, but also to the Allegheny County Health Department, uh, for their support of these programs. And this contract does allow us to continue that work.
Thanks.
Thank you. Council, Council President?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. Who are the organizations that will receive the funding or you don't have that yet?
Uh, presently, we will do a continuation of the contract for the Foundation of Hope. We have not established a contract for the other partner. I think that's, you know, a discussion that's ongoing. Um, but we have in our, our, uh, in-depth conversations with the Public Safety Director, the Bureau of Police, uh, and the administration, recognize that we do need to build kind of the core infrastructure for these programs and then work to build out the community partners that are part of the long-term supports and the natural supports for people. So I would, I would say that this phase is largely going to be focused on building that, uh, unified infrastructure so that an officer in zone six or an officer in zone three or an officer in zone one are all following the exact same process and can have the same expectations, um, of what, you know, what, what they will encounter if they try to seek support for people in their community.
So I'm gonna be honest, I feel so frustrated with our services that in all the funding that we're spending on social services, all the funding we're spending on employment, training, anti-violence, uh, hospitality, all kinds of money that we're spending for outcomes that our residents aren't seeing. And I think part of it is that we empower and work with organizations that promise and say that they can deliver things and have absolutely no capacity to deliver what they're saying that they're going to deliver, or say that they have some area of expertise in, they have no area of expertise in. So I, I really want to make sure that when we're doing these things, that we're, we're putting forward some benchmarks and some goals that they have to reach and so that we can actually see some real outcomes. So our residents can see some outcomes for the money they're paying for all these programs and all the services. I think everybody loves and would, would do anything we can to stop violence, to help people with drug and alcohol, um, rehabilitation, to help people be employed. We would do anything we could if it worked. But when we keep seeing all this money going out the door and all these, and the only one that seems to be benefiting are organizations who feel like they're not benefiting from anything because they feel like it's never enough. And so I think it's incumbent upon us, um, as we're watching these dollars and, and seeing our city struggling through horrific acts of violence, a lot of overdoses, um, homelessness, problems in the communities, it's incumbent upon us to make sure every dime is going where it should be going and is actually going in a place where it's actually going to affect change. So I'm gonna just say I'm gonna really watch where these dollars are going. And I don't know if you've had any conversation with the Onala Club, but they're in, in area that they've been around for a long time and I've never seen, I don't see them getting anything from the city. Um, and they do have some successes. So I just want to say that I'm just gonna really pay attention to what we're doing with these dollars. I, our residents want outcomes. They deserve outcomes. And we want to see that, that every dime we're spending is, is really helping people. So I'm just gonna say I'm gonna pay attention to it.
Thank you. I've got Councilman Coghill followed by Councilman Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, welcome, Laura. You know, uh, I just really want to start by saying what a tremendous asset you have been to me. You know, since I've taken office, I really didn't grasp the, you know, the severity of the overdoses in, in my district until, you know, we, we sat down and talked. And you threw out those numbers, eleven hundred, um, on an average monthly overdoses. Has that been trending up, down, staying the same as of through the pandemic or where are we at with the complete picture there?
Uh, Councilmember Coghill, thank you so much. And, you know, it's, it's a pleasure to work with you all. Um, I, I think the thing that we've, you know, been struggling with is that, uh, the overdoses that we've observed locally, and I think this, this bears out nationally, uh, the, the, the number of people experiencing overdoses began to increase prior to the pandemic. Um, we started to see that increase occurring in the last quarter of twenty nineteen, um, which makes it difficult to identify what the factors are. That, those, those overdoses, as we see them, um, continue to, to remain high. Um, month over month, there's some fluctuation, but they continue to remain high. And I think we can point to social isolation. Um, just to, uh, I think very, very dire situations across our city and across our country that, uh, are exacerbating people's substance use. Um, but things like access to mental health care, uh, is really, really critical. And, and unfortunately, you know, we can look and realize there are certain populations that it's been very stigmatized to receive that care, even non-traditional care. Uh, is, they're not always culturally, uh, bilingual or culturally, um, aligning resources for people in our community. So, uh, I, I know there are a number of partners working on this, but it's, it's, you know, it's not enough. Uh, and that, uh, substances can be a very effective way for people to cope. Um, and the fact that the supply of substances is extremely unpredictable and very potent means that someone does not expect to be putting themselves into a situation where they could die and, and they are. And there have even been limited situations where we've seen contamination or, uh, mixtures of substances that were unexpected, like opioids in, in cocaine. And, um, and, and those tragedies are even more difficult to prevent because, uh, we're not, we haven't been working with those individuals on an ongoing basis to try to reduce the risk of their use and to try to help them to access support. So I think, um, we're, we're optimistic. There's, uh, strong, um, uh, opportunities that we have from the Health Department. As Council President Kale Smith said, you know, we want to keep being good partners, but also holding our provider community accountable for the commitments they make and recognizing that they're the ones doing the direct service. So that is really hard. Uh, it's easier to allocate the money than it is to do the work. And I know Council President Kale Smith, you, you've done the work. Um, so I think that's, that's a critical thing is to keep looking for those partners and, and building out that, uh, network. But we do, I think as a city, recognize that we need to create the infrastructure for those partners to plug in. Uh, right now, it's, it's difficult because, you know, it's, we have multiple bureaus in public safety responding to different types of crises. We don't necessarily have a point person in each of those bureaus that works to collaborate or coordinate resources. So that's what our, our office is hoping to do with the building of infrastructure through the Roots Program. Um, and then, you know, with the continued relationship building with the community partners where we're providing them with adequate support, uh, to do what we're asking. Um, because I think our expectations have to align, as Council President Kale Smith said, our, our expectations also have to align with what we're providing and what the, the resources are on the community.
Thank you, Laura. And, you know, one of the grantees, um, would, would, would one of the grantees be Dan Pelco's organization?
Yeah, that is, you know, that's, uh, under discussion, but that's, that is the goal. And, and based on what our work, our collaborative work with public safety and the mayor's office, we do want to have that single, uh, it, part of infrastructure that, uh, we build out almost as a fourth bureau. Um, and then from there, it allows us to have much more, um, uh, collaborative relationships with the, with the partners who are, are also in the community doing the work.
Yeah, because as Councilwoman or Council President Kale Smith said, I too have concerns as to, you know, who, who we distribute the, uh, grant money to. And when we find one like Mr. Pelco's organization that I feel was really effective, I feel, you know, um, so good about funding that specific organization. And again, you know, Laura, I just want to thank you for the work you do. Um, you know, I know you're tireless at it. And, um, you've made a big impact in my district since, since I've been there, just in information and being on the ground with me and, you know, recognizing the problems and where they're at. So, um, so keep up the good work and we look forward to working with you. And hopefully these numbers will decline in the future. Thank you.
This one go.
All right, thank you. I, I began to talk yesterday a little bit about sort of my work and my view of sort of violence in general and gun violence specifically. And so I will try to say it in more clear terms. As Councilman Lavelle and I have worked together, we kind of agree and with Laura. Um, you can call it many things. I'll, I'll, just for, um, mnemonic purposes, I call it a STAR approach, right? There are these five things that we have to do in a comprehensive, coordinated way. If we're going to really address this problem, there are five things that have to be managed. Um, one of them is the overall coordination, right? So that the city is coordinating in a comprehensive way all of our efforts. That's one of the points of the STAR. Uh, to the left-hand side, you have community services, similar to the outreach workers and the community-based things that have to occur in order for crime and violence to stop. On the right-hand side, you have, um, social services. That's what Laura is talking about. Um, and all of the counseling and, um, therapeutic and trauma-informed therapy and all of the wraparound services, um, um, that are needed, um, for, for, for young people and for young adults. And so you have community-based services, including after school programming and all that stuff. On the left-hand side, you have the, you know, sort of strong social service, um, things that need to be done. Um, and then you have policing, right? You have to have the right type of policing. Policing by itself will never solve crime. It never will, right? We tried that already. We've done the lock them up and put them in prison. They simply came back later, you know, five, 10 years as better criminals. So we know that hotspot policing works. We know that works. And, and, and we also know, um, um, a police that is, that is trustworthy and are, are, uh, build community trust, you know, and are not biased. All that works. And then there is community development, uh, redevelopment. Because the truth of it is, and, and I, I, I read this somewhere, it was the best example I've ever had, Rip. If you were, if the city was in a snow globe, you know, a snow globe, if you were able to turn it upside down and shake it around so that the whole city got mixed and turned upside down, violence would stop overnight, right? Because mostly violence is in mostly disproportionately in segregated poor communities. So if poverty was switched, so there wasn't any concentration, it was everywhere in the city, you probably, because the reports say that when poor people are around not so poor people, their behavior changes. But when you put them all together, you have crazy stuff happening, right? And our segregation is part of our problem. So, so if we put ten billion dollars into the black community and rebuild them overnight, they would probably stop shooting each other. But we're not gonna, you know, we can't, we don't have the resources to do that. So those five things, those, that star, those five things, there's the overall public health coordination, left-hand side, community services, right-hand side, social services, left-hand side, down, police, right-hand side, community development. But that's the, that would have to be coordinated over, over in, and I, I will advocate for that process. That's the model that has to be done every year, year in, year out, over multiple decades, coordinated to, to stop violence and violent, and violence reduction. And so this is part of that medical, medical, but social services, the, 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 um, the drug, the drug rehab, right? The drug prevention of OD, of overdoses is part of that process. And so, um, again, w- w- and I, I agree with Councilwoman Smith. We need to make sure that every dime we spent is accounted for and we put the same kind of, kind of demands of accountability. Whether that money is in community-based services or social services or policing or in community development, um, all of those dollars have to be accounted for that we're using the best and smartest approach in a comprehensive, coordinated manner to address violence in general and gun violence specifically. And I, I think we can. And that's sort of what I've been advocating for, both publicly and privately, mostly, and now publicly, that's the approach that I think we should be doing. That is really, that's what a public health approach looks like.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council President?
Yeah, I just, I just, real quickly, I'm just gonna say, again, the thing that I think we can, should be asking and working with is not only what, who's getting the funding and what we're doing, and I do want to thank Laura. She's been very helpful to all of us, I think, in different, in different ways. But I think we should be asking what county is doing with their billion dollars that they get for social services. What are they doing for us in the city of Pittsburgh? When was the last time they did a needs assessment? Are they delivering the types of services that our residents need? Are they just doing what they've done for thirty, forty years and just continuing to do it and think that's what we need? I think, I mean, we need to evaluate what is needed in the city and make sure that the county services are matching up to the needs of the city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Really recommended. That takes us back to page seven in our first deferred paper, which is Bill nineteen oh six.
Bill nineteen oh six ordinance, amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article Four, Chapter Nine Oh Eight, Public RAM Districts, amending the code by the addition of a new section, nine oh eight oh three D five, Oakland Sub District E, O P R E, Oakland Crossings.
Motion to approve.
A second brief discussion, please.
Question, Councilman Cross?
Thank you. Thank you very much, members. Thank you for your patience through this, uh, this long and arduous process. Before you today, you have an amendment by substitution which was submitted to council by the Planning Commission. Uh, along with the, uh, uh, legislation to amend by substitution, there is the, the correspondence of, from Planning Commission that came to us as to why these changes are made and recommended and why the legislation's been crafted this way. Uh, I believe this, is that right, Madam Clerk? These are, not all members got these. These are the text files that were attached as to the explanation. We did not want to burden all members with this, but there are copies, hard copies and digital copies that you got and a hard copy that exists in the clerk's office if you wish to delve in deeper to the, uh, text files. But with that, I will o- offer up a motion, uh, to amend Bill nineteen-
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilperson?
Yeah, can you help me understand what's going on here? Oh, men by substitution.
Take that offline.
He's super.
Yeah, this, this, this-
Men and hold.
Yeah. And it, it, we amend to hold for our, our, to begin our process. So there will be ample opportunity.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm voting on amend by substitution.
Yes.
To include, like, I don't have the larger file.
This is-
I could grab it, but it's, it's the, um-
Explanation is this that's attached to it.
Yeah.
The Planning Commission sent over as to why they are approving it for our consideration and the recommenda- recommended changes they want to see in the ordinance, uh, which is really, it's really quite small, but the path to get us there is quite substantive.
Let me understand one point. Is, is this all the, the, uh, conditions? Is that what?
Those were the conditions that the Planning Commission wished to see.
Right. Is that amended here?
That is what this amendment is.
That is what this amendment is.
Amendment is. That's correct. That's exactly-
So all-
And this is their correspondence explaining how and why they made these recommendations. They crafted the amendment by substitution that they gave to us and then the text files that give the background as to why the, the, um, uh, the, uh, suggestions were made. Harken back to the text files that you can explore as the issue might be.
Okay. Um, so these ten conditions are, are changed in this whole substitution.
That's correct.
Furthermore, have you made further changes?
No, we have not. There is one that may come for further consideration in our process. Uh, there, the recommendation here does limit the length of the building that the grocer would be housed in. There has been some discussion that, uh, a, a slight extension to that, um, grocer would permit all of the, um, trucking, uh, deliveries to take place inside the building, which is really a positive to not have that all taking outside the building. But that comes through our process, which will be weeks in the making.
Okay, so there were, um, this bill, when it came to the table last time, there were several groups that came in support of this or, or I'm sorry, and not, not supportive of the current, um, way that it was, it was done.
The way it was submitted to Planning Commission.
Yeah. So we haven't heard from, from them at public. So they're, they're all expecting to come to public comment. We're, we're gonna make a motion.
If they choose to come to public comment, they certainly can. But this is now the bill that will be before us by a recommendation of Planning Commission for us to begin our process.
And hold, we're gonna hold the bill and then when would that public here?
When, while work to schedule with the Council President. We have, uh, at least twenty-one day lim- we need a twenty-one day notification process first before we can schedule.
You're gonna make that motion as well?
After I motion to, uh, or after we vote on the motion to amend the bill, then I'll do the motion to, which we are required by code to hold our-
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend on the table in a second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none?
Bill is amended, so motion to hold cable cast public hearing as per our process on Bill nineteen oh six.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for cable.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your help. It was a lot. This is this is the bill. It was actually crafted by Planning Commission submitted to us including their, it's to create the district. That's all what's doing is creating the district. That's it. Believe it or not, after all of that, this is it. I know, it seems like it should be more, but this is the foundation of which brought.
I was I was assuming a limpier.
It's just to create the district by which the development can take place.
All right, Bill sixty-five.
Bill sixty-five, Resolution Amending Resolution Number eight sixty-three, entitled Adopting and Approving the Twenty-Nineteen CDBG Program By Transferring Remaining Funds From The Jane James Street Step Reconstruction Project To The North Side Christian Health Center, Seventy-Six Thousand Dollars And Traffic Calming, Fourteen Thousand Two Hundred Twenty Dollars And Fifty-Four Cents.
Motion to hold two weeks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks. New papers, Bill two fifty-six.
Bill two fifty-six, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of Department Of Permisses And Licenses And Inspections To Enter Into An Agreement With RJ Lee Group For Professional Services Providing Materials For An Analysis Of Dust Of Lead Dust Samples Pretending The PLI's Execution Of The City Of Pittsburgh Lead Safe Ordinance For A Sum Not To Exceed One Hundred Thousand Dollars.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman?
I just want to highlight this. This is one of many steps that the Department Of Permisses, Licenses And Inspections are taking and some that we we all of council work with to um, you know, not only fund inspectors uh for to, you know, enforce the 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 lead ordinance, but also every uh uh all the different um certifications that will be required from the inspectors, different, you know, changes to the software. And this is one of the several changes that are being made, or, you know, actually, this is an agreement that we're entering into uh allowing the mayor mayor to enter into agreement with a a lab to test for the lead. So just want to thank PLI for uh falling through on everything that we've um we've we've spoken about.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one new paper, Bill two forty-eight.
Bill two forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of Parks And Recreation To Enter On Behalf Of The City Into A Grant Agreement With Chester County Intermediate Unit With The Purpose Of Receiving Funds In The Amount Of Eighty Thousand Dollars That Will Be Used To Purchase Technology And Other Materials Needed For The Facilitation Of Computer Science Learning Experiences For Children Attending Educational Programs At Select City Of Pittsburgh Recreation Centers.
Second, with discussion.
Question, Council President?
Is this, this is for our Rec Tech program? I I just think it's amazing. I I did a program with um CMU. Uh, Mrs. Bailey and I uh did a program with CMU. We trained our Pittsburgh police, they, the students, grad students at CMU, trained our Pittsburgh police in coding. The police trained our kids in coding. And for us to get computers, Pittsburgh Public Schools couldn't pay for them, but South Bay at School District did. And I just think it's amazing that we're helping our kids locally. And I wonder why the partnership it it should be, I I would think that um in some cases, the Pittsburgh Public Schools was contributing somewhat to the to the computers or to the technology and to, because it's benefiting our kids. But I would like to see uh maybe even Carnegie Mellon um do do a little bit more in this area too um with the donation of of computers or technology. They do so much worldwide. It'd be nice to see something on a local level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? firm's recommendation. That takes us to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilman Strasburger. We have one new paper, Bill two fifty-five.
Bill two fifty-five, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into An Agreement With PsychCom Data Systems, Inc. For Professional Services Relating To Continuing Maintenance Support And Upgrades To City Law, The Department Of Law's Current Legal Case Management And Administrative Support Software System At A Cost Not To Exceed Eleven Thousand Three Hundred And Seventy-Six Dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? firm's recommendation, Bill, excuse me, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Gross, first new papers, Bill two forty-nine.
Bill two forty-nine, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan For The James T. Givner Building Project Located At Six Twenty-Seven North Homewood Avenue.
To approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our last bill, Bill two fifty.
Bill two fifty, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan For The P H C Development LLC Project Located At One Eighty-Six Home Street.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, that is approved. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. Uh, this afternoon at two thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill one ninety as relates to the Tito House Historic Designations. Registration closes at twelve thirty today. This after, this Saturday, April twenty-third at twelve PM at the South Wing Reading Room on the second floor of the main library in in Oakland, there will be an in-person only public briefing by the reapportionment advisory committee on the proposed reapportionment district max. Speaker registration closes Friday, April twenty-second at four PM. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, April nineteenth and April twentieth, respectively. Speaker registration ends at nine AM Tuesday and Wednesday morning. To register to speak at our meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Is there anything from members, Madam President?
You knew I had to say something. I just want to say happy birthday to Councilman Kraus, a belated happy birthday to Councilman Kraus and to Councilwoman Strasburger, who was yesterday, right? It was the day before, sorry. Yeah, they're getting old. I'm glad I, I'm glad I'm, I'm glad Rev and I are staying young.
Councilman Coghill.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate our Madam President. I was um I was honored to be at a dinner honoring her as one of the top most one hundred powerful, I believe, people.
They meant pitiful. They said powerful.
In her self-deprecating ways that she said that to to the crowd, but um she was only one of three or four speakers, and I just wanted to say I thought it was very well deserved, even though I know you're humble about it, but um, you know, I thought it was well deserved. You did a great job.
You're thinking.
Very well deserved.
Well, I think.
If with that, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Come here.
Second. Are adjourned.